Good evening. This is the joint public hearing for proposed air permit and proposed National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System (MPDES) permit for Grayson, Carter &amp; Son Contract Inc. It's October 23rd, 2025. This is 6:30 PM. We're at the Tusconia Railway Roadhouse, 110 North Indian Street, Tusconia, Alabama, 35674. Good evening and welcome to the public hearing on behalf of the Alabama Department of the Environmental Management. My name is Alexander Chambers. I am the designated hearing officer for these proceedings. The role of the hearing officer is limited to ensuring an orderly hearing so that an accurate recording of this hearing may be developed for the department's evaluation. I do not make any decisions regarding the proposed permit action. On behalf of the department, we appreciate your participation in tonight's hearing regarding the proposed issuance of air permit number 7010065X001 to Grayson, Carter &amp; Son Contract Inc. and the proposed issuance of National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System or MPDES permit number AL0084523 to Grayson, Carter &amp; Son Contract Inc. for a proposed limestone quarry to be located at 1809 Gargis Lane, Tusconia, Alabama, 35674. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to present oral testimony on the proposed permit action. In addition to oral testimony, the department will also consider all written comments submitted before the close of the public comment period. The department has requested your comments and we appreciate you taking the time to make them known to us. On September 17th, 2025, notice of the date, time, place, and purpose of this hearing was posted on the department's website. In addition, the department sent notice of this hearing by email to individuals and organizations who had previously requested advanced notice of permit proceedings. A copy of the notice and the email distribution list will be entered into the record of these proceedings. Copies of public notice, permit applications, preliminary determination, and draft permits have been made available for inspection by the public at the offices of the department at 1400 Coliseum Boulevard in Montgomery as well as on the department's website. This hearing is open to the public and anyone wishing to present oral testimony or submit a written statement may do so. Linked these statements or those containing considerable technical or other complex data should be submitted in writing. Summaries of such statements may be presented orally. Each speaker will have five minutes to present their testimony. All testimony and written comments should be as factual as possible and should address the subject of this hearing. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to offer comments to help ensure that all relevant factors are considered before a final permit decision is made. Please be advised that the department is limited in the factors it can't consider when making permit decisions and must base the determinations only on whether the permit applicant has satisfied those requirements of applicable environmental statutes and regulations granted to A.D.M. by the legislature. Person giving testimony may be questioned by the hearing officer or other department staff to clarify points and to develop a better understanding of what is being presented. This proceeding tonight is not an open forum as in a question and answer session. This hearing is an opportunity for you to submit comments that you wish the department to consider in the final review of the permit application. However, you may pose a comment in the form of a question which will be compiled and addressed by the department in its complete response to comments. In addition to oral testimony, written comments may be submitted on the proposed permit action. You do not have to make an oral statement tonight in order to have your written comments considered by the department. Written statements may be submitted to the hearing officer tonight or delivered to the department in Montgomery as directed in the public notice for this hearing. All written statements previously submitted and those received by the department before the end of the public comment period will be included in the hearing record. It is important to note that written comments submitted through postal or electronic mail are given the same consideration as those that are presented in person at this hearing. All oral and written testimony will be included in the hearing record. After giving full consideration to the hearing record, the department will make its final decision on the proposed permit action and develop a response to comments for the draft permit. The hearing record, final permit determination, and response to comments will be posted on the department's e-file system. This hearing is being captured by a court reporter to develop a transcript of this hearing for review by the department. In addition, the entire proceeding is being recorded on video to be posted on the department's YouTube channel to make it accessible to the public. Now let us move on to the purpose of this hearing, the receipt of public comments. The order of appearance of persons giving testimony will be as follows. First, a representative of the department's water division, then a representative of the department's -- first a representative of the department's air division, then a representative of the department's water division, then a representative of the company will provide a statement, then any elected officials or the representatives who have registered to speak this evening. All remaining members of the public will be heard in the order in which they register this evening. I now recognize Ms. Doty Mosley to present a statement on behalf of the department's air division.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Doty Mosley, chief of the petroleum unit within the Construction Materials Section, which regulates permitting, compliance, and enforcement activities for quarries for the air division of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. In addition to me, the department's air division is represented by Mr. Doug Carr, chief of the Energy Branch, Ms. Pam Hunt, chief of the Construction Materials Section, and Ms. Sarah Mattingly, environmental scientist, senior. The department exercises authority under the Alabama Air Pollution Control Act and the Alabama Environmental Management Act to administer and enforce Alabama's air pollution control regulations. The department also has the authority to implement federal air pollution control regulations. Grayson, Carter &amp; Son Contracting, Inc. has applied for an air permit for a facility that engages in the crushing, screening, and conveying of limestone. These processes contain equipment that would be subject to federal new source performance standards. These regulations were developed by the United States Environmental Protection Agency and are uniformly applicable across the country. The department administers these regulations for Alabama. Additionally, the regulations limit emissions of dust from crushers, screens, and conveyor transfer points. Dust from these processes would be controlled by wet suppression systems. The wet suppression systems would be capable of meeting or exceeding all federal and state requirements found under the regulations. In addition, wet suppression systems would be used to minimize dust generated from vehicle traffic within the site. Any dust generated from the facility's operation would be in quantities that would define the facility as a minor source under the state and federal air pollution permitting programs. Based on our review of the air permit applications for this facility, the department has proposed the issuance of an air permit developed in accordance with applicable state and federal requirements. While the department understands that there are concerns surrounding the siting of a facility such as this, including traffic, noise, property values, and others, the department does not exercise zoning authority and may consider only comments relating to air quality in its final decision on this request for an air discharge permit. A.D.M.'s authority regarding quarrying operations and other mining operations is limited. The department does not have the authority to regulate other aspects of the mining activity, including blasting. Blasting is regulated by the state fire marshal. The department has made a preliminary determination that compliance by Grayson, Carter &amp; Son Contracting, Inc. with the conditions of the proposed air permit would not result in violations of applicable air quality standards designed to protect human health and the environment. This preliminary determination will be reconsidered after all comments are received and reviewed. Thank you.
I now recognize Mr. Robert Glover to present a statement on behalf of the department's water division.
Good evening. My name is Robert Glover and I'm an environmental engineering specialist in the mining and natural resource section of Stormwater Management Branch in the Water Division of the Department of Environmental Management. The mining and natural resource section conducts permitting, compliance, and enforcement activities for the discharge of treated effluent from mining facilities within the state of Alabama. The department's water division is also represented this evening by Mr. James Carlson, chief of the Stormwater Management Branch, and Mr. William McClemmons, chief of the mining and natural resource section. The department exercises authority under the Alabama Water Pollution Control Act and the Alabama Environmental Management Act to administer and enforce Alabama's water pollution control and water quality regulations. The department also has the authority to implement federal water pollution control regulations. The draft National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System or MPDES permit issuance proposal proposes authorization for discharges of treated effluent from the limestone quarry and associated regulatory regulated activities through two proposed outfalls of the waters of the state of Alabama identified as Draw Creek and Spring Creek. Draw Creek and Spring Creek are classified as being suitable for fishing wildlife. The permit also authorizes discharges from groundwater. Based upon review of the MPDES permit issuance application for this facility, the department has proposed to issue the MPDES permit which was developed in accordance with applicable state and federal requirements, which are designed to be protective of water quality. A.D.M. does not exercise zoning authority and may only consider comments relating to water quality in its final permitting decision. Similarly, A.D.M. understands other legitimate concerns may be held by public, including truck traffic, property value, aesthetics, proximity to residents, noise, and blasting. A.D.M.'s authority regarding mining operations is limited to the regulation of discharges of effluent to waters of the state. The department does not have authority to regulate the mining activities itself or these other important topics. The department has made a preliminary determination that the compliance by Grayson, Carter, &amp; Son's Contracting Incorporated with the terms and conditions of the proposed MPDES permit will not result in violations of applicable state water quality standards, which are designed to protect human health and the environment. This preliminary determination will be reconsidered after all comments are reviewed and received and reviewed. Thank you.
I now recognize Mr. Tim Morris to present a statement on behalf of Grayson, Carter, &amp; Son's Contracting Incorporated.
Good evening. My name is Tim Morris and I serve as special projects manager at Grayson, Carter, &amp; Son's Contracting Incorporated. I would like to thank the Alabama Department of Environmental Management for the important work you do and for the opportunity to participate in this public hearing tonight. Grayson, Carter, &amp; Son has proudly been a locally owned and operated civil construction company for the past 29 years. During that time, we've had the privilege of contributing to the growth and development of North Alabama. As you know, the purpose of tonight's hearing is to discuss the air and water permits for the proposed quarry at Tusconia. We believe this project is important for the county, not only to support continued economic growth, but also to help maintain and expand the essential infrastructure that serves local communities. If permitted, the Tusconia quarry will generate both sales and severance tax revenues that directly benefit your community. It will also create new employment opportunities. Grayson, Carter started this company with hometown values and we've never lost sight of that. Today, we employ more than 650 individuals. These men and women live in both county as well as in nearby communities like Lauderdale, Lawrence, Morgan, Limestone, Madison, and Marshall counties. At this new Tusconia location, we anticipate creating approximately 75 additional jobs within the first 18 months of operation. When we say we're a community-based company, we mean our employees live here, they raise their families here. We are deeply invested in being a responsible and valued part of this community, both as a company and as individual citizens. We take our responsibility to protect the quality of your air and water services. We have diligently followed A.D.M.'s permitting process, collecting and submitting all required environmental data. We are confident that we have met every permitting requirement and we are equally confident that we will continue to meet or exceed those standards in the future. We are committed to operating the Tusconia quarry in a way that delivers real and lasting benefits to this region economically, socially, and environmentally. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight.
I have no cards indicating that any elected officials registered to speak at this time. We will now proceed to the receipt of comments from members of the public. If anyone has prepared a statement that cannot be presented in a five-minute timeframe, please use your time for oral testimony to summarize your comments and submit your full statement to the department in writing or placement in the record. I will say, we do not have a lot of people registered to speak, so if you go a little over, we could be flustered. I now recognize Kenneth Gordon. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name in the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
I own his I at 1520 Ashton Street. My property butts the supposed or the permitted area, at least the proposed permitted area. I've also circulated a petition which will give you the copies of like over 40 signed petitions opposing this from residents of the Arroha Estates and surrounding areas. I would be curious, you know, how many of the multi-hundred of employees that Carson employs, how many of them actually live within proximity of this particular project? And will not be affected at all? I've already made it very clear what you can, what this group can and will consider. And obviously, as stated, reduction of property values, noise pollution from the blasting and processing products, potential structural damage caused by the blasting, and damage to the public in private highways cannot be considered. And I understand that that's your rules, that's your rules. However, that doesn't really help a lot of the folks that live in this area. I'm concerned about the scope of the permit itself. If you folks can see, and I've distributed this around, these are maps taken online from the application for the water permitting to leave. And it shows very clearly what the permitted area is. My question is, is when it comes to blasting, is that available anywhere within this permitted area? I can't find it written down anywhere. Because in fact, in reality, if there are no restrictions on that, then they could literally be blasting within 50 feet of a structure that I own, not to consider my house, which is a little further back. This particular is off of their architectural or engineering drawings, I believe, also designates a berm, sort of a button to the contingent property lines. I've been told that Carter, Grayson plans on putting a 30-foot berm up to help mitigate the noise, I guess. However, in reading through his application, I saw nowhere, there's a berm mentioned in the drawing, I saw no mention of the statistics for that berm. The only mention I saw are the measurements was a typical type, you know, typical berm notation in the maps with a maximum of three feet. So I would like the committee to at least investigate that. If in fact there's going to be a 30-foot berm, is it really required by the permit? I'll try to get through this. I didn't realize there were five minutes. I also found somewhere in the Alabama code that if any blasting occurs within a half a mile of a structure, then the owner of that structure can submit a request to A.D.M. and A.D.M. will require the permitee to conduct or to pay for inspections of the properties involved within this half a mile radius. So if it's law of blasting is allowed within this whole permitted area, then personally every house or structure within that, I will be personally submitting a request for these inspections to be done. The inspections, I believe, for that code have to be done by somebody approved by A.D.M., which I would assume would not be somebody within the employee of Carter, Grayson. As far as the air quality goes, I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but EPA has designated all of, personally all of northern Alabama, as a red zone for radon gas emissions. Radon gas emissions, if they emanate up into the atmosphere, they're considered harmless. If they emanate into a structure and penetrate that structure, the EPA says anything over four, I believe it's pronounced per kilos, their unit of measure, anything over four is dangerous and should be mitigated. I personally have paid two contractors thousands of dollars to try to eliminate the radon gas in my residence. They've got it under control to a degree, but to this day, when we have heavy ratings, I have reviews of 99. The experts say that is unperceived. So that is just typical, I guess, of my area. There, I know there are other residents within the Arroha Estates who have had radon issues. So I'm assuming that air quality would also include radon gas. And if so, I would request that A.D.M. require Carter, Grayson to hire a geological engineer to come in and do a study and give an opinion to the likelihood or lack of likelihood that blasting in our area could worsen the pattern radon emissions in our area. I have years of records of the pattern showing any fluctuation in that blaster that could be caused by the blasting itself. As far as water pollution, again, the area, this area in northern Alabama, by, for the U.S. Geological Society, is identified as having a lot of cursed underground topography. If you're not familiar with that, it's formations, irregular formations of like limestone and stuff like that, which where you generate a lot of these sequels. Our whole area is covered with sequels. I know there was one right behind my property that was filled in before Grayson acquired that property. But again, I think that's an area that A.D.M. should be requiring to additional surveys in that area because when these cursed areas start to collapse, the blasting can cause that in the weakened areas, which then tend to pollute the water things. I don't know if that cursed area, the potential for that is normally considered by A.D.M., but I certainly think that that would fall within your port area. I've also been told that Carter, Grayson plans on putting a 30-foot berm basically amongst contiguous property lines separating our property from the permitted site. I've looked at his application that I had available to me online and the berms are clearly divested in their engineering drawings, but I can find no specifications for that. The only specification I found is a, it's like a typical construction format, a typical berm, maximum three feet. If there's going to be a 30-foot berm, you know, trying to mitigate, I assume, like the noise, then is that a permit requirement? And if not, then I should think the residents, you can't believe it's going to be put there in this area. Another issue I found, I've also submitted in a package several, the other letters, by the residents that have submitted, and they all see the, pretty much they worry about the same issues, many of which I'd say before you guys could not consider. But beyond that, I have, we'd like to know, and all of this stuff is all referenced in the attachments that hand out the names, and we'd like to know about, I don't know, when does the current comments focus?
Well, it's tomorrow at 5:00. Tomorrow at 5:00. Do you? I now recognize Sue Westlander.
These are the petitions signed by residents.
Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name in the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
My name is Sue Westlander. Private property owner at 2392 Spring Valley Road. And our property directly backs up to Rogers Group Quarry, so we have a lot of experience with what their quarry has done to us. Our property is more recessed than anyone else in the area and we keep getting new sinkholes in the ground after drains, you know, we try filling them in, but yet the blasting keeps happening and the sinkholes keep happening. We can only guess that one is affecting the other. And then, so my big concern is that with another quarry going in so close to where Rogers Group is already doing, having their quarry, you know, we're getting blasting from a couple of different areas. That just seems like it's just going to intensify any problems that a quarry would bring to an area. In addition to that, and this may not be covered tonight because I wasn't, I was unsure what was actually going to be covered, but over the summer, we had a new garage built with brick on the outside of the garage. And when the contractor heard the blasting going on, he told us he could not guarantee that brickwork because of the blasting. So our property is being affected. We feel the rumbling of the blast throughout our whole house when it happens. And so the people that are going to be closer to that quarry, they're going to feel the same thing. It eventually has to do some damage. I know that our wells, this is what I was told by neighbors, our wells were dried up because of the quarry. When the quarry started digging and hit the water table, the wells were dried up and they had to go into city use, you know, the use of city water at that time. So we know that it's affecting the water when you start digging deep into the ground. So again, my concern is that putting another quarry in so close to where there already is one, how is that going to magnify all the damages that have already been experienced by the people in the area? Thank you.
I have no more registration cards. Is there anyone that did not register that would like to speak at this time? Okay. What we're going to do is we're going to take a 10-minute break just to make sure there's no one else that wants to come in and speak. And then at the end of that, if anyone does, we'll let them speak and then we'll adjourn. We'll take a 10-minute break.